Say it all through October fourth, twenty twenty-four, second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody have any problem with vouchers and invoices?
I just had a question about that storage facility in Fayetteville. Who are we reimbursing that for?
One, two.
Here's Kirk Shanks here, he can probably tell you. The, the storage facility at Fayetteville, Petville, any sort of.
Any sort of.
Yeah, what is that for? What is it for?
Insurance, uh, uh.
A thousand and ten years.
That's, uh, our service, uh, stuff that we're trying to move down to the training center. Um, but that's, they've been renting us for a long time and we, we got the storage containers down there to move a few. Uh, there's, nobody's had time to, uh, partially clean the stuff out, but, uh, we're still in the process of, uh, finishing that up. Nobody's really had, uh, time since you've been away with the fire coordinator. The fire coordinator moving off?
Hmm?
Does the fire coordinator move it off? No, there is no fire coordinator.
I mean, i- if the fire coordinator was there, would he move it all himself?
He'd have time to move it off. Some of, some of it needs more than one person.
I was, I was just curious.
Right.
But it sounds like the bottom line is it's a fire association expense and not a fire department expense. That's what I'm asking.
It's fire.
Is that right?
Equipment that, uh, used for all fire departments.
But who owns the equipment?
Does, do the individual fire departments own the equipment?
Some of the equipment in there is owned by fire departments. Uh, the rest of it is, it's like, uh, uh, testing equipment. There's a majority of things in there. There's, uh, one building, one is full of, uh, hazardous material, uh, response equipment, uh, which is the whole county. Uh, one is, uh, uh, red training, rapid intervention training. Uh, so there's various things in there, but, uh.
His name is on the lease.
Hmm? I'm not, uh, sure about looking. It's, uh, either, uh, I used to have everything under Fayette County Fire Services, which was part of the, uh, Office of Emergency Services. Uh, it either, it's either that or, uh, the, uh, Firefighters Association.
Okay. I think we need to determine, given our concerns about reimbursing the Firefighters Association for things, we need to determine who's on the lease before we reimburse this particular expense. And we need reimbursement requests to be specific, um, about what they're, you know, who's requesting it, not just what it's for. Because if Fayette County Commission isn't renting it, then it can't just come in as a storage facility. It needs to come in as, you know, who is renting the storage facility and who we're reimbursing.
Uh, it's not a reimbursement, uh, never has been. It's been a direct pay.
I think what she's saying is you're asking for reimbursement for it then, right? Or is it?
No, it's paying for it. It's a direct, the bill, it's a direct pay of the bill, which y'all have been paying for more than how many years?
We understand.
Yeah, let me ask you this, Mr. Brooksink. How much is it a month? How much is the bill?
Two hundred and twenty dollars.
Is that a month?
It says it's October twenty, twenty-four, four units.
That's four units. Four units.
Two hundred dollars a month. And the other units, how long ago did you get the other units? I know this was approved sometime back and you got the other units a while back.
Yeah.
How long did you get the other units?
Uh, I believe, well, not the exact date, I believe it was.
Six or eight months ago.
Or four straight, yeah.
Is that right? Six or eight months? That's what I figured. That's two hundred and some dollars a month, six or eight months. Why don't you just ask the commission to request to give some money to pay somebody, load it up one day and move it, so we're not paying two hundred and some dollars every month? Since the fire coordinator isn't, isn't there, you said the fire coordinator would be the one to move it all basically by himself. Why don't you just, y'all guys get together and get a figure, say, about three hundred dollars one day for us to move all this stuff, with the county commission pay for us to have just moved all this stuff instead of paying two hundred and sixty dollars a month? And get it done really quick. Get some young men that want, want some extra pay. I'm just making a suggestion, that's all I do. The commission makes the decision, I'm making a suggestion. Instead of us another four months paying two hundred and sixty dollars a month, which will be over a thousand dollars, spend three hundred dollars and pay somebody to move it.
So, uh, we could come back with a proposal on the sixth, I mean, next meeting?
I mean, the commission may have to send it, but I'm just making, I'm just giving you a suggestion.
Or would the administrator be able to approve that expectation?
I don't know, the commission won't put you on this. I'm just giving the suggestion, say to the county some money, the people some money. I know it's not very much.
Well, it, it's just not lost on me that everything's going to be transferred to the fire training center, which then means it's going to be owned by the fire training center or controlled by, because I'm, I'm just, like, I was trying to figure out who owns what's in it and then whose name is on the lease. And then, you know, now that it goes to fire training center, does that mean it's being, the ownership of it is being transferred from the fire departments to the fire training center? Or, or, I mean, what's the intent?
The Fayette County Firefighters Association exists for one purpose and one purpose only. And its mission statement is to protect the people of Fayette County with fire services. And, uh, everything the fire association owns is owned by the fire departments. But that's, that's, the, uh, the ownership of the fire association is just made up of the, all the firefighters of Fayette County. It has no other purpose and, uh, it's not going to cease to exist unless the fire department ceases to exist.
All the equipment that's in these, these storage sheds, are they all current equipment or are they old equipment that needs to be disposed of?
Some of it needs to be, uh, disposed of. We're in the process of trying to find out if this is good or not. Uh, there's some equipment that I'm trying to see if, uh, there's a possibility of recycling it and, and getting some money now. But, uh, uh, most of it is, is usable equipment.
Okay, you said they were tested, but what's the testing equipment in it?
Uh, for instance, the, uh, there's, uh, I don't want to get specific because I probably don't know what PTO tubes are, but, uh, testing equipment, uh, which, uh, we're in the process of, of changing it out. And, uh, there's, uh, testing for hose testing and, uh, different things. There's assist, uh, part of it, a lot of it is teaching tools.
Okay, so the hose testing. I thought that we brought in a company to test all the hoses.
This is, this is equipment that can be used, uh, to put on a hydrant to test flows.
Okay.
And, and.
So it's a flow meter.
And hook up to the, uh, actually hook up to trucks if there's a problem.
Okay, so it's a flow meter where it tests the hydrant or the, or the discharge for the truck?
Right.
Okay. All right, so it's a little bit different testing equipment than just for hoses?
Right.
Okay. What I would like to see is that anything that's not usable anymore to be discarded, um, because there's no use to keep paying for something that we're not going to be able to use.
There's a question on, the main thing, we've got some little bottles that are out of date, but there's a specific way they have to be disposed of and they have to be destroyed so that it can never be used again. And, uh, so you just can't throw them in a dumpster.
Okay. Understood. All right. That was, uh, my part. You guys got anything else?
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to let it go with, you know, saying that because we haven't had a fire coordinator, that wasn't done. Because all of this came up when, um, Joe Chris was still fire coordinator and it wasn't done then and it wasn't done while Mr. Brooksink was fire coordinator. So, so it's not like this issue is new. I mean, I just noticed that it wasn't well defined on our ledger for voucher approval, so I wanted to know more details about it and I suspected it was the same storage unit that we've been discussing for several years now. So I, I, I don't like that you're trying to put it back on the commission because we haven't had a fire coordinator, because when we did and it was you, it still wasn't done. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of tired of that, everything's the commission's fault thing. You know, the people, you know, you were being paid to do that job and that part wasn't done. I understand you had other things to do, but, but don't try to put it back on the commission that because we don't have a fire coordinator, that's the reason. Because the reason was, it just wasn't prioritized. And, and it wasn't prioritized by the people the commission was paying to do it. So, um, moving on from that, I'm, I'm going to move that we approve the vouchers and invoices except for, um, that storage facility until we can get a, uh, grasp on, you know, who's doing what there.
Second. All favor?
Aye. Secondly, I, I'm going to, um, go ahead since I think it's noticed enough, given that this is on the vouchers and invoices. I, I'm going to ask, move that we authorize Ruth, um, within her standing power to, um, hire help to move the things out of there as soon as the fire service can organize and, and sort through it and decide what's worth keeping and what isn't.
I agree. Did I say, did I say second?
Yes.
Second?
Then say all favor.
All favor, uh.
Aye.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for nine eleven and nine thirteen.
Second, all favor?
Oh, just one, wait, wait, just one thing in those meeting minutes that we need to correct. Um, Eric Brooks is a, um, delegate, not a senator. With that correction, aye.
All right. Estate settlements?
Mm-hmm.
There, packet. I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements. Second, all favor? Aye.
Aye.
There's a, uh, an extra one. Carl, here, at Carl's request.
Oh, good, I'm glad Carl's here because it's, I'd like to know kind of how it went down because I see Kanawha County on it and all types of things.
The, uh, this is John Goffman. I had helped his daughter handle several years ago. And, I mean, we, uh, had a final settlement of that and everything's distributed, dispersed. Uh, she had an account, Mrs. Sky, who was John's daughter, uh, had an account to pay taxes out of. I was with her when the accountant gave her the figure that she needs to keep to pay taxes with. Uh, I talked to, excuse me, the bank. Uh, that account was never used for that purpose. It was just that open. She apparently paid the taxes on her own account. And, and she died in May this year. Uh, the only person that she had as heirs was her son and she built an estate, uh, trust together for her grandchildren, two grandchildren. There's somewhere, uh, near seven thousand dollars in that account. And he had asked for my help to get, uh, that transfer to her estate. He's a physician in Utah, near Salt Lake City, actually works in Salt Lake City. And so I filed a petition asking to not be appointed to, to sign whatever documents are necessary at United Bank to transfer that home to the state. And if the commission approves that, I will be going over there, getting a cashier to check payroll per state and putting that in the mail to give the data. I didn't ask to reopen the estate per se because there's really nothing in the estate to take care of. Not even going to have to file another, since it's already been accounted for.
Anthony, do you have any questions?
No, Carl and I have already talked about it. I've already reviewed the document. I don't, I mean, if you, if you have any questions, John, straightforward.
Yeah, I agree, based on that presentation. I move that we approve, uh, appointing Carl Harris as the special fiduciary for this estate.
Second, all favor? Uh.
Aye.
Ms. Taylor, do you have a right to, uh, stamp your name?
Yes, please. And I'll be back, uh, Sunday or Monday from the, uh, funeral, so I'll, um, be there in person for anything that needs flowing.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Ruth? Oh, nine fifteen, oh, wow, wow, we, there you go.
I think.
Okay.
I need to hold off on that, she's in my attention that I need to, you know, work with you.
Do you want us to postpone? Make a motion to, okay, go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
Just a question, how much notice, Anthony, do we need? Is two weeks enough or do we need to put it in November?
Uh, if we're going to go forward, about two weeks would be fine.
Okay. So postpone to, uh, sixteen October?
Yes, if we could.
Okay. So I second Tom's motion to postpone to sixteen October.
All favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so the exhibit items, we have like five minutes. The burn ban review.
Jack there?
He is.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, for lack of, uh, uh, more eloquent way of talking about it, it's time to lift.
Okay. I'll make a motion to lift the burn ban that was put in place by the commission. Second, all favor? Aye.
Aye. And Jack's been doing a great job. I want to acknowledge that in front of everybody. I've been really impressed.
Thank you, I appreciate the commission's support.
Please move.
You just need to motion to approve the financial statement and publish it. I'll let you pass this, it's ninety pages, so I'm not going to pass it in November.
We're going to look at it in front of everybody here. I'll make a motion to approve the financial statement and publish. Second, all favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Armstrong Creek, there's a resolution request about K Tasso Chaney, and I don't, uh, excuse me. Um, thank you.
Okay.
Are you familiar with John?
Yes, I am. This should be listed as water only, not for the complete assets of Armstrong Public Service District because they still have sewer operation. Um, so at this time, until I see, because the PSC did, uh, did, uh, say that West Virginia American Water was supposed to take over the water side, not the sewer side, or wastewater side. So until it says water only, um, I am not in favor of doing this resolution.
Also, are, are the parties present, Armstrong Creek and West Virginia American Water and, um, Region Four?
There.
Leslie Taylor's on.
Leslie's always here for us, but I'm just wondering if the other interested parties are, are present.
Well, I know that the PSC has their meeting on Armstrong Creek wastewater side on the eleventh of October at Montgomery, uh, city council hall pit.
And that's just the public meeting, right? That's not even the decision, but the public meeting?
No, it's a public and decision. They're going to do it at the same time.
I didn't realize that. Okay, well, I, I agree with John. I'm going to move that we, uh, postpone this to at least October sixteenth.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
They had also asked about a grant support letter at the last meeting and you wanted to postpone it for more info. But I think you wanted info from their attorney?
Yes, um, again, I think we need to wait until after the eleventh until what the PSC, PSC.
PSD.
Yes, thank you. PSC, at the hearing.
Leslie was going to check into some of that too, but I, I agree, let's just wait here at all at one time. And Ruth, if you guys could make a note to see if we could get a lawyer from Armstrong, PSD to attend that meeting, that would be helpful.
Yes, I'm Taylor, this is Leslie. I'll try again to get someone to attend the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, and I spoke with K Tasso Chaney, Chaney yesterday, Allison, just so you know. I thought that would be good.
I figured you did.
Yeah. It's fine.
All right, we want to move on to nine twenty?
Yep, nine twenty.
Everybody here, W D U Law?
I think they're all down.
Hello, Jesse, how are you? You have the unmuted?
Aye.
I'm good, how are you all this morning?
Hey, Jesse. See, you're, you're still looking spiffy.
Trying to.
Hey, um, we need to redo some stuff. Angela, you want to come up?
Aye.
Since you've already been talking to Jesse?
So the commission at the last minute approved to have W D Law do the UDC update and Allison, I think, had some questions regarding the timeline, so.
I did, but dang, if I can find my notes on it, I'm not at home right now.
You, you, you want me to ask him something while you look for your notes?
I don't know if I'll be able to find them, you know, I'm like, kind of on emergency, out of town, so, um, I'm looking to see if I put anything in my phone and praying that's where I put it, but may not be the case. Um, I remember some of them. One is Jesse, I was hoping we could get an updated, um, proposal. We realized that you guys were kind enough to let us use the former proposal, but along with some updated, uh, suspense dates in it. Um, also, there, there are some, I can tell that it's boilerplate and I understand how these things go and you guys do a lot of them. Um, I would like the deliverables to include primarily a, um, there's a lot of focus on meeting with the planning commission and stuff, but, but I would like your team to meet with the county commission first because we're commissioning a study. Um, we have a comp plan in place. We have some priorities that we've been clear and consistent about for the past almost four years now. And I think it's only fair that we articulate these to you. And I think we have some lessons learned based on our comp plan process, on some things that are included in your process that may not be, um, efficient or, or, um, productive. Also, I'd like there to be a, um, something at the end before you present, you know, where you, um, confer with, uh, the county commission with your penultimate draft so we can give some input at that point before it is presented thus for approval. That's some of my list. The rest of it, I could reach out to you directly when I find my notes.
Yeah, that all sounds fine. And actually, with a zoning ordinance update, we have to work as closely with the planning commission. The planning commission is tasked with drafting that in conjunction with, uh, the clinic, but, you know, we have done it where we work with staff and the, and commission, uh, more closely and then turn it up to the planning commission. And that is more efficient and we're happy to do that.
Good. Good, well, that, that's, that's what I, those were my main things and I have some more specifics that, once I find them, I'll get with Angela and we'll give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jesse, go ahead, I'm sorry. Jesse, did you guys work with Oak Hill on their plan?
We have talked to Oak Hill and my understanding is that they are doing some things themselves right now and at some point, um, they're gonna engage somebody and I don't know if that's going to be us or not.
Okay. They have, uh, one thing that Angela brought to my attention. They have a chart that is sort of foolproof. Um, you can look for a type of business and see exactly where it needs, where it can go to and where it can't go to, uh, and it is really, really neat.
I like that idea.
Okay.
That, that, I'll do it, we call it a use table and we have a list of, of any type of use that you can think about. And then we have the different zoning designations across top and where that use is allowed, where it is prohibited and where it is a conditional use. So, uh, we, uh, we do that.
Okay, fantastic. That's one thing I wanted to check with. If we were to, if we were to approve this, um, is there any way that we can move this thing forward faster than two years?
Well, um, a lot has changed in the, the years since we submitted the proposal. We've taken on some new projects and we lost one of our banners. So in that respect, I would have to say no, but, um, if we work with the county commission first and then start meeting with the commission, that does add some efficiencies, so I think that might speed up the process, so.
Okay, good, thank you. And are you going to be on campus tomorrow?
I will be, yes, sir.
Okay, don't be surprised if I call you.
Okay. I can get, I can get Angela, I already have it, I can get her myself a number and Jason in the office.
Okay. Appreciate that. I, I got one question, Jesse. You there? Or did you leave?
I'm here.
Hey, does utilities have anything to do with zoning?
Under the West Virginia code, I believe the terminology is essential utilities are exempt from zoning. So essential utilities are allowed in every zoning classification. There is no definition of these facilities, so, um, there is a little gray area there.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify that for everybody talking about utilities and zoning.
Along those lines, though, now that you bring that up and we have Jesse here, Jesse, are there any best practices out there anywhere for planning commissions to follow? We, we had an incident lately where our planning commission kind of went off book a little bit and tried to force the applicant to, to say what, uh, he was going to do with his property and, um, I'm trying to, and we found out from our lawyers there wasn't anything we could do about it at the county commission. And, and I don't think it was intentional. I think it was because, you know, we probably need to do some training. I'm wondering if there's some training or some best practices or something that we can provide to our planning commission and try to avoid, um, any kind of, you know, issue like that in the future. Same for boards of zoning appeal.
Yeah, the clinic offers training to, uh, planning commissions, boards of zoning appeals, county commissioners and city councils and the like as well, and staff. I mean, we can train everybody in the county that touches, um, planning and zoning. Um, and we can talk, talk about that, I can talk with Angela. As best practices, we do have a, um, some planning commitment bylaws and things of that nature that we often use with our planning commissions. I'm not sure that that would affect the incident that you're talking about, um.
If that was the result. That was the result, that's been resolved, but I, but for the future, we wanna make sure that they, you know, kinda know what the bounds of their authority is and, and that sort of thing. Their responsibilities.
We found that, and their citizens, and this is not easy stuff, so I'm not criticizing them, but we have found that a lot of, um, planning committees, VAs, just don't have any training or background in this, and, uh, it helps to get some refreshers or some instruction on what A D says that they have to do and what they can do and what they can't do.
I think I would like that as well.
Yeah, I guess.
There's a difficulty sometimes between what's the planning commission's property and what's the B Z A's responsibility. Um, it should be clear that the county commission has the power and everything, um, but that can be reinforced as well.
Okay, wonderful, well, um, Angela, when I, when I get back to you about reaching out again, I'd like to participate in this conversation also, so let's just do it both at the same time.
Sure.
And then, my colleagues, I will tell you what I learned.
Allison, in your email, there is an updated timeline when you get a chance to check your W B mail.
Oh, good, thank you, I checked it this morning, and it, did you just send it?
It was maybe seven thirty this morning.
Okay, oh, no, I didn't check it after that, I see it, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I apologize for not getting it to you earlier, I got to you early this morning, and I apologize for that.
All right, do you have anything else? I would like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the decision to go with.
You approved it, you already approved it.
Oh, you already approved it, okay, all right, cool, making sure.
That's okay, John, I'll go with you again. On utilities, I'll be all in it. All right, nine thirty.
For Lumberdore and Leslie, uh, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jesse, is Jenna here to present that, is O C to approve?
Okay, Allison, we just went through the training with the board of zoning appeals and zoning commission in Raleigh County, that the law said it did, and it was great. So, if you all need that, I mean.
Yeah, everybody needs it.
Yeah. So commissioners and, and Allison, I've, uh, sent this over to you in an email, the document that I'm referencing, um, so that you would have it in front of you. Um, in June of twenty-two, we located.
I think you had a copy.
Oh, I've got it. Um, in June of twenty-two, we located, uh, Gainwell Engineering in Hiko. You all were instrumental in locating their first U S location, um, and they have grown exponentially, uh, as they promised. Um, and one thing that we talked about in June, uh, of twenty-twenty-two was a potential incentive for Gainwell for locating in Fayette County and staying and retaining business in Fayette County. Um, you have in front of you a proposal for a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of tax, and that proposal that we have put together is a five-year proposal, starting in twenty-four through twenty-twenty-eight. Um, and it is based on the real and, uh, the real estate and personal property of Gainwell Engineering. We've made some assumptions on the annual increase, uh, we've kept that at about five percent annually, um, because that's typically safe for a company to retain at that size. To date, Gainwell Engineering has thirty-eight employees, they are hiring seven more within the next year. Uh, they've invested one point five million in real estate, so they have purchased the location, which originally they were just leasing. Uh, they have fixed asset investments of about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, they've invested twenty-two mil, twenty-two and a half million in inventory. Their payroll, um, is, was one point one million in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three, and their payroll is now, uh, three point four five million, um, for twenty-three and twenty-four. So overall, since Gainwell have been here, uh, since June of twenty-twenty-two, they've made a total investment of twenty-nine million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, between all of their capital expenditures and their inventory and their payroll. So the projection that you see here, um, in the proposal that I have, uh, put forward as a, a five-year plan is a one hundred percent tax abatement for twenty-twenty-four, and that is valued at twenty-two thousand, a little over twenty-two thousand dollars for real and, uh, personal property. Year two and three is a seventy-five percent tax reduction of the personal property tax, and year four and five is a fifty percent tax reduction of the real and personal property tax. Obviously, the percentage is, uh, traditionally the direction that a pilot will take, simply because it's easier to manage a percentage of it than a amount based on, um, the company growing or, you know, hopefully not in this case shrinking. So, um, this is the, sort of, the, the, the gist of, uh, why I'm here today to ask for this, uh, incentive for Gainwell, and we have Ryan and Jason, who are here from Gainwell as well, um, that can speak a little bit more about their community-based investments, um, and how they are continuing to invest in Fayette County.
Yeah, that was my.
Can I ask you a question first?
Yeah, sir, I'm ready.
Is, first of all, is, is Eddie Young still in the room?
He is, yeah.
Okay, good, um, were you guys able to find out and break down further how much of this investment? And I realize some of it is, is harder to calculate, but has, has gone back into Fayette County versus the state?
We have not broken that down yet, Allison, we're happy to get those, I could, I think Eddie can probably help pull those numbers to determine how much of that investment is staying in Fayette versus going to the state with their property tax.
I can tell you the values that we have on the property and personal property.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay.
So, I'm Jason Sizemore, uh, general manager for Gainwell Engineering, North America. Uh, as Jenna had mentioned, we originally came to Fayette County, brought this business Fayette County, I, I brought Fayette County, I was born in Oak Hill. Uh, lived in Fayetteville before we put the business here, we had several options when we moved the business to North America, to open it up, to clean Fayette, Raleigh, and all county, and we chose this location, uh, chose this locations for several reasons. There's a, you know, we're, we're, we're a mining company, so mining routes run deep in this area, uh, it's an industry off the end since nineteen ninety-nine. Um, so well, well versed with the knowledge, the skill set, uh, the people of Fayette County, so that was part of the reason probably put this business here. We felt we could be successful, we could contribute back to the community, and we've done so, just as he roughly mentioned, uh, roughly four and a half million dollars in payroll in two years, I think it's pretty good for a startup company. Uh, we try to invest in the youth, we sponsor local high school, middle school sports programs, local rec league sports, uh, programs, try to be there and be involved, uh, if you guys are in Fayetteville or, you know, a lot of times we'll see our loved ones on the back of those shirts or, or hanging on those shoes, try to support those programs. We plan to continue our growth, market is, is good right now, mining, we're looking at also some diversification into other, uh, other areas. You know, mining is a lot of sunset industry, not gonna be here forever, much as we want it to be, we know it's not, it's very difficult. The market comes up and it comes back down, uh, so we are looking at diversification in other, other industries. We'd like to, we've got room at the property we bought in Hiko to expand upon the facilities, we've got thirteen acres probably, roughly forty percent of it's used, and we probably have sixty percent of that property that they are available to expand it on. Uh, probably some of the other challenges that we have as, uh, as an organization wanting to expand upon our, our growth at that location is obviously the infrastructure. Uh, one big discussion that we had very early on is sewer, you know, right now, we probably got thirty people in that facility, we've got a couple other people in other states, uh, but if that facility continues to grow, or we are operating a separate system, uh, so, so public sewer is gonna be, will be huge in order for us to, uh, facilitate additional folks at that facility, and also facilitate our business, you know, we get dirty here, and it's gotta be clean, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, we wanna be good stewards of, with the E P A, and that's just kind of who I am, who we are, and our plans. Uh, we're grateful for the, you know, the welcoming that, that the, the company pays the county. Uh, again, our workforce has been very good, our turnover rate has been very low, we offer our employees what they like, their good wages, everybody's eligible for good benefits, retirement, um.
I'm just curious, how much do you think you spend in community a year, just, uh?
Uh, just in, like, sponsorship, are you, are you talking?
Whatever costs the company.
Well, we do, like I said, four and a half million, well, we've done four and a half million in payroll in two years. Probably, if I had to throw number one addition, probably five thousand a year in sponsorships and.
Excellent. Uh, thirty million dollars, almost thirty million, I was rounding up to thirty million, it's nothing to sneeze at, you know, that's, that's the task, thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, and, you know, and I also like to mention, you know, we are North America-based, we're based here in Hiko, but we ship products and components to seven other countries, um, so China, uh, India, Singapore, Australia, uh, Canada, Mexico, so, so we are operating as an international entity.
And I will say, you know, obviously looking at the entire region and the companies that we have across the region, it's really important for us to have the relationships with those larger companies and the ones that wanna grow here, and Jason's always a phone caller, a text away, and, and, you know, he's operating at full capacity, and when I stopped by and visited the site, uh, a couple weeks ago, it was, uh, in the very two short, two short years, it's completely different than the day we cut the ribbon on that site, and so his employees seemed very pleased, his operations running smoothly, and, and the, the facility was, you know, organized and top-notch with all of the inventory that they're shipping in and out of there. And so, um, again, when they located in Fayette, they asked for nothing, uh, to support in locating with a site, and so, uh, I would ask the commission to consider the five-year pilot, uh, that we proposed.
And Jason, I wanna congratulate you, Jenna had already told us about, about the site and all the improvements, I'd love to come back out and see it, but, but you, I mean, you know, you have some very lofty goals and you have met every single one of them. I mean, I, I can't imagine how you ramped up as quickly as you did, given all the labor shortages and, and the other considerations, housing shortages and the infrastructure issues and the, you know, permit compliance and all that stuff that you've had to do to grow. I mean, I, I'm really impressed with it.
Well, thanks, we have a, we have a good team in place, we have a good leadership team there at Hiko, so, uh, I feel like the company has good direction, uh, so, it's, uh, it's, 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 it's probably ten years off my life so far, but it's, it's a good group in place.
I, I agree, you must have, must have, so, um, Eddie, do you have input for us on this?
I just had a question, all right, I mean, uh, these numbers are, are forget the numbers, we're using actual numbers, and we'll be doing seventy-five percent with the actual number.
Yes, correct, yeah, so, um, that is fluctuate based on what, you know, their asset value is and what they're in, in, you know, increased in their capital investment.
It's good to have this, because the twenty-twenty-four tip taxes, we're gonna have, we're gonna eat that, okay? Next year, when I do twenty-twenty-five, when we do twenty-twenty-five, we will reduce the value of the, uh, properties, the personal and the real, to reflect a seventy-five percent.
Correct.
But where your budget's in line.
Yeah, so that way you're not putting money on the budget, and then you gotta take it back after you're done.
Correct.
So it'll be, it'll be, uh, it'll be off the books for the five-year period.
Yes.
Excuse me, any questions? I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the request. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thanks, but here.
Congratulations, Gainwell.
Ruth?
Thank you.
This is for an opportunity application for community corrections. Teresa is here. I want to see her.
She's still here, I, I made some edits to your, to your application this morning, Teresa, I hope you don't mind too much.
Not at all, I'm just laughing, I don't, um, this grant is a little bit different, um, as far as the way it, yeah, I think they were just trying to get, um, terms of some of the money really quickly, so it won't always be this process, they added a disclaimer on the application instructions, but, um, the finished ground funding does not, um, is essentially for, um, providers and nutrients providers and security personnel profit agencies, so a lot of the information was not applicable to us, but we have to file it, um, we have to apply for it under our, the, 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 um, project director, so, um, the only thing I need from you all is, as of right now, is just a letter of support, it's, uh, number twelve, the patchment of the whole process, it's required for recruitment, so, um, that was rather a simple one, easier than it started out being, and, uh, it keeps it so much.
Hey, I wanna thank Amy for, for putting that letter together with short notice, um, it was very thorough and, and she did a great job. I changed, I changed the substance a little bit just based on my knowledge and I added some more push to it, um, with regard, I added that the county commission is considering, the program's so successful that we're considering opening, or expanding the program to another part of the county and things like that, um, just to, to create a, like, a little larger impact statement based on what I know about the programming there, um, but, uh, I know Amy and, uh, our staff, because of the short suspense they gave us, we have been receiving a ton of support letter requests, and they've had to pivot and, and dedicate time to, you know, getting those in line for us, um, for the short notice meeting.
Um, I personally, but Amy and I tried this morning, it's one thing, it's another thing, and building, so, again, thank you. You all pulled off a small miracle for me, anyway, uh, but it's all a large amount of money, it's, there will be plenty of more, um, grant opportunities for these, uh, West, Westing First Foundation, this one is only a small, but, so, because we only, uh, meet certain criteria and there are four purposes for this grant, so, it's a total of sixty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars of that is for drug testing supplies, which we spend a little more than that, and it's less than twelve months anyway, on that item, and forty-two thousand dollars for a mid-size SUV to, uh, get us more economical and fuel-efficient transportation for long-distance transports, we take, we're taking one or two people somewhere versus, uh, versus a thirteen-pack year, but also, is all this being used for, it's the actual purposes that we use for, which is state day operation. We wanna have any problem being assigned with any of that money or being able to spend it in short months that they're giving us.
Yeah, huh, that's it, I'm making money, you're a bruiser, second, all in favor?
Aye, and Teresa, if that, um, request is not granted, be sure to submit it through, um, we have, we're gonna be hearing ARPA funding next meeting.
Absolutely.
And, um, at least for the vehicle.
Um, that's the last one, that's the last one. But also. I'll bring it up to you, thank you.
Um, a homeland security grant, and Jack and Sizers are both here, so that. Jack, you wanna explain what you were talking about unofficially?
Unofficially, at, uh, the, uh, state, uh, you know, state conference, the, uh, amount of the homeland security grant was below target value, so we were encouraged to go back and look at, uh, possible applications of this grant. So, there's a, there's a few, uh, uh, what all the bosses of ours would call no brainers on there that, uh, uh, we could definitely apply for, it's never guaranteed, but, uh, put in, uh, uh, some time and, uh, gonna filter that to Amy, uh, about, uh, things that I think that, uh, would make the county safer. Uh, specifically, there's a, uh, a poll session, uh, on law enforcement theater that, uh, the sheriff's department's been looking at, I know, we've had some cross-talk on that, there's a line item for, uh, uh, sweatwater, uh, which affects county special operations team, and as everybody knows, that equipment is incredibly expensive. Um, there's a few things that internally we should probably have on board for, uh, mobility, power generation, and in general, just providing, uh, more, uh, emergency services, uh, for the county.
Okay, so, is asked right now, is there a match for this, or we're just, um, what are we doing? Okay, so we're just approving the application at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I move we approve our application for the Homeland Security Grant supplemental.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jack.
Does that cover the stuff Jack was talking about and Cypress' government law enforcement request, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, I mean, I, I, there's no harm. I mean, I'm, I'm always going to support a, an application for grant support for our programming, our critical programming in the county, so, um, yes.
Thank you.
Number six?
Uh, Family Resource Network is Diane. Hi, yes, good morning. Um, so like Teresa just mentioned, um, the Fayette County Family Resource Network is also applying for the First Foundation funding. Um, we are applying in a different target area, though, so do not fear that, like, our application and her application will be, um, competing against one another. Uh, there are four target areas that the First Foundation has approved for this first round of funding, and we will be focused in the youth prevention and workforce development area. Uh, a little bit of background, the, uh, First Foundation is giving, uh, up to eight hundred thousand dollars in each target area in each region. So Fayette County is in Region Six along with ten other counties. They can divide that eight hundred thousand in each region to four awards. So we base those numbers off of our application. We will be asking for two hundred thousand. Uh, that includes our direct cost and our indirect cost. As far as our initiatives, kind of like what you said earlier, this is a one-year grant. There is no, um, stipulation application that this will extend past one year. I think, like Teresa had mentioned, they want to get money out now. Um, so we looked at our programming that's already established in the county and what could enhance those, but sustain past this one year. Uh, so we looked at big investments and big, uh, big initial expenses that would have had that large expense later on. So we've actually broken it up into three target areas, and they're mentioned in the support letter. Um, so the first one is going to be engaging youth in after-school activities. Last up, we currently have two health educators who serve in the Midland Trail Middle High School and Meadow Bridge Middle High School. It's, uh, interests. They have an interest of learning esports, which is a fast-growing, like, industry and job and collegiate program, um, as, along with, uh, coding and other technical soft skills that employers are looking for. So we would like to purchase all the startup equipment for after-school programming in those areas, and then have our staff implement those. That way, capacity at the school, uh, does not become a barrier. Uh, and it would be in those schools just because that's where we have a presence right now. It could expand further into other county schools based on their capacity. Uh, the second one is to create a parent network by implementing the parent cafes that offer by the B-strong family organization. So we would bring in trainers to Fayette County to train parents, to talk to other parents and create that support network. Uh, because we find that parent involvement with each other between isolation, between COVID, uh, between school consolidation, we want to create a stronger network for our parents to support one another during the challenges and the victories of raising kids. Uh, so let kindergarten parents talk kindergarten parents, parents vice versa. And then the third one is to, uh, implement a, um, I'll say the interactive, um, it's called the mega brain, is what they call it. But basically, it's a blow-up brain that middle, middle school students, uh, specifically is what we're looking at, could walk through and we reinforce that idea that your brain's not developed till you're twenty-five. So if our students are initiating and retraining behavior, they're making that decision on a young brain instead of fully developed brain. So the brain looks at alcohol, tobacco, and other substances and how it changes the functions of the brain. So we'd like to purchase the brain. Once the brain's purchased, the only thing we have to do is do presentations around the, the county. So there wouldn't be a large expense after it's purchased. And so that is our three areas and our three, um, expense areas. And we are confident that once the, if we're approved for this funding and once those initial expenses are spent, that we can maintain this programming past the one year, uh, that the First Foundation is giving.
Any questions, Commission?
No. Sounds great, Diane. Great presentation.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And I don't know if there's a way, I don't know if any of these other programs are competing for the same pile of money for this one. I don't, I don't think we have any other prevention-related applicants. And we have, um, Just for Kids. Diane, which of those categories do you think Just for Kids might fall under?
They're under the Child Advocacy Center, because it's a different target area.
Okay, so that's different. And then we have the Feed Service Program is probably going to compete with the Day Report Center because it's a, uh, program for pregnant mothers who are in treatment, I think. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to send a letter prioritizing, um.
Well, and they're giving up to four awards in each area. But again, that's throughout our eleven-county region.
Right.
So there may be some counties that don't receive any of the money or apply. Um, but it, it really just depends on the, on where you're applying in those four areas. And I thank, uh, Ruth also for the quick turnaround time. This grant is due, um, Saturday. So thanks for everything. Getting us in there, because like Teresa said, it is a requirement of the grant.
We're doing our best. So, thank you.
Thank you. Number seven?
Yeah, so number, I will ask, we move out to the end, considering the executive session. Feed Service Letter of Support, not present. Allison, I think we've been talking with him.
Yes, this guy emailed Ruth and I, um, I think it's Jay Anderson. He is over a feed server program down in, in Montgomery, um, that serves, like I just said, um, pregnant women. They provide housing and all kinds of programming. And he had requested the letter in advance of this, of our meeting because he was not going to be, um, around to submit it on time. He needed it to be able to submit it before he left town. Um, and so we had, you know, floated that around, and it's on here for NUC ProTunk. I also want to mention, as we do this, that Just for Kids submitted something yesterday, and Ruth got on it really quickly, and they were really happy, um, to turn around for them that we're going to have to, um, approve NUC ProTunk at our next meeting. Um, and that's for their programming, you guys are well aware of, because we've sent them funding and, at the Child Advocacy Center. So, um, I'm going to move that we approve the Feed Service Letter of Support NUC ProTunk.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item, there's two letters to the VOH about Glenn Siding Road and Henry Loving Road, nothing?
Okay, on the second road, the Loving Road, that is in Anstead. And Anstead's going to take care of that within the next two weeks. So that's going to be a mute subject, so we can cancel that second letter.
All right. Nice. We'll have to thank the mayor.
Make a motion to approve the DO, the, the one last, though. Yep.
Glenn Siding Road.
Yeah. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And then, as always, I'm scouring the news, and I found two Fayette County students who, um, really had overachieved and, and were in the press for their achievements. We had a first grader who, who won an SA competition about wanting to be a, a teacher. And, um, and the letter is written, uh, as Amy pointed out, uh, Amy, who's an education works with kids, um, at her level, so she can read and understand how proud we are of her. The other, uh, student from Oak Hill High School was, uh, received the National Merit Scholarship, and, um, that is very prestigious. Very few people get it nationwide. President Clinton was the National Merit Scholar. Um, it, it's, um, above and beyond. And this child also has been really involved in, um, sports and her church and the, for it to say it, Fayette Theater and other things. So, um, Amy was able to gather some more information about her accomplishments that we could include in our letter congratulating these girls and their parents for their accomplishments. So I know you guys are always all about doing that, too. So I'm going to move we approve both letters.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, please.
So the next thing is the Civil Service Commission appointment. The commission seat has been vacant. That's the resignation. I want to say, was that Richard Rennan?
Yes. And it's our seat on the Civil Service Commission, the Fayette County Commission's seat that he was occupying.
Right.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Rod Perdue to fill that civil service seat.
The second. Rod Perdue, the second.
Rod Perdue, the second. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, you know, appointing Jack Kincaid as the commission representative, or Root Safe Commission replacement.
That's my idea, because I'm on it now. And while, you know, I don't mind, and I think I was able to help with the bylaws, the bylaws are in, intact. Jack attends every meeting, so we have other, Ponda and Philip attend the meeting. Um, I think we're overstaffed, and we have competent staff at those meetings. So I'd like to, to move that we appoint Jack Kincaid as, as our, the county commission's representative instead of me to finish my term, which expires at the end of April of twenty-twenty-five, and then we can, uh, hopefully reappoint him at that time. Because he's been, he's contributed so much, they don't even miss me.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then the last item was a support letter. Allison wanted to have an executive session.
Yes. I'm going to move that we go into executive, uh, session to discuss that with our counsel.
I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We just got some, uh, advice from the lawyer, no decisions was made. Miss Taylor or John, do you want to? Okay.
I'm just going to move that, that, because our lawyer, who wasn't able to attend, um, this morning, is, is at a funeral. I want to move that we postpone this item to this meeting on the sixteenth and ask that the Fire, uh, Association, um, have whoever, uh, was advising them on making this request or taking this action appear at that meeting as well.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Is that the last order? Motion to adjourn. Second. Third.